Regularly scheduled meeting of the Jackson County Board of County Commissioners to order. I'd like to welcome everyone to the meeting. We're going to begin by asking everyone to stand for invocation and for the budget allegiance.
Dear gracious heavenly father, thank you for the opportunity to gather among our citizens. Thank you for all the blessings you have bestowed on each and every one of us. Thank you for this great county in which we live. Thank you for the employees and citizens that make this this county what it is. Now God directs us, helps us to make decisions that are not only pleasing unto thee, but are good for our citizens. We ask these things in your name, dear Lord, amen.
Amen. My congratulations, sweet as mine, in the United States of America. Through the republic, voice of hands, one nation, indivisible, with the peace of God.
Yeah, I'd like to welcome everyone to our meeting. I would like to ask anyone that has come in front to speak on any particular issue to please keep their comments and questions as concise as possible. We've got a fairly lengthy agenda today and we'd like to try to get out of here before lunch if at all possible. We've got next on the items to do, we've got an approval of an agenda. We've got a couple of changes, Ms. Daniels.
I have a under section one, an addition of item number three, which is a recognition of Hunter Potts. Under section three, number one, support approval of temporary alcoholic beverage permit. Under section four, number fifteen to sixteen, I wanted to change order number three for next step endeavor. And lastly, number sixteen is the result of the Jackson Blue Springs concessionaire highest ranked.
And also I'd like with permission of the board to under reports and requests moves item number two, which is a request from the sheriff to to up at the top of the agenda. He's got a meeting with DEA that he needs to attend and would need to get out of here a little bit quickly. So we'll take care of that, one of the very first things, if it's okay. Chair will entertain a motion to approve the agenda, got a motion from Commissioner Peacock, a second from Commissioner McKinney. Any other questions, clarifications hearing none, all those in favor of the motion stated, please signify, raise in the right hand. All opposed, same sign, motion carries unanimously. As per the request from the sheriff, we'll move into section one, recognitions, resolutions and presentations. Sheriff Edenfield, good morning.
Good morning. Um, so our agenda item this morning is our budget, closing our budget last year. And at the end, we had one hundred and ten thousand four hundred and seventy-three dollars. At the end of closing the books out, now of that one hundred and ten thousand four hundred and seventy-three, there's eighty-one thousand one hundred and sixty-one, which was the airplane money where we sold the plane. And you guys had already approved a couple of times to allow us to keep it for drones. So while we haven't already spent it, DMS came out with the rules, only certain drones. Well, that was over a year ago. We had a couple of shares challenge it, we thought there may be some changes, but fast forward to now, there's not going to be any changes, we're going to have to buy what they say we can buy. So out of that one ten four seventy-three, we're asking permission to be able to keep that back again. And we do have quotes now to move forward with that. Um, so that would leave twenty-nine thousand three hundred and two dollars and forty-three cents to be returned. And of that, returning nineteen thousand and three hundred is fuel. You guys recall last year when the fuel prices went up and we were getting low on fuel funds. You guys gave us another hundred and fifty. And I told you guys at that moment, you know, if we don't spend, you get it back. And obviously here we are to give that back. Um, and Mr. Peacock had requested to look at our fuel records over the last couple of years. So in doing so, just made five copies. This is our way of records, which is by cards that we purchase fuel with.
This is over the last five years, two years, okay.
Now, the, we have bulk purchases. Then we have the WEX cards. Uh, the bulk is through BIDU makes and that equates about thirty percent of our usage. So about seventy percent, excuse me, seventy percent is bulk. They've been at U makes about thirty is through the cards. Now, most people would think, well, the bulk is 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 a is cheaper, but most times it's cheaper to use the card. Uh, crazy as it sounds, it is, that's the way it is. So most of us try to use the the bulk purchase at the at the old office, but sometimes because of locations, they'll use the card. And then there's times throughout the year, because it goes off current price. So if we buy bulk fuel at a certain price and then two days later, the price of fuel drops a nickel. So that don't happen a lot, but it could, then it's actually cheaper to use the card. So anyway, that's a little detailed, a WEX report of everybody's got a card. It basically shows you who bought the fuel, where they bought it and the amount. And it also gives the bulk purchases through the last eighteen months. But I think you guys at the county already have those receipts already. Um, so like I said in the beginning, when we asked for additional funding, we didn't want it to buy toys and to blow it, it was for fuel. And what we didn't spend, we're giving back, which is nineteen thousand three hundred. And the rest was just what was left out of the general fund. So that's where we are.
So Sheriff, the request is for us to allow you to spend the eighty-one thousand dollars for the drone program.
Yes, sir, eighty-one, one sixty-one.
Eighty-one, sixty-one.
I know this is the third time you guys have allowed me to 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 keep that, but I promise you, we're moving forward. We were just waiting, trying to get the most bang for the buck, if you will. But it's pretty much set in concrete. There are certain ones we're going to have to purchase.
Mr. Chairman, I make a motion to approve this request.
Got a motion from Commissioner Peacock, a second from Commissioner Branch, any other questions? All got the sheriff here. Hearing none, all those in favor of the motion is stated, please signify, raise in the right hand, all opposed, same sign, motion carries unanimously. Thank you and go to your meeting.
Thank you guys, have a blessed day.
Okay, let's move forward with this first section, which is recognitions, resolutions and presentations. Ms. Daniels.
Sir, Ms. Judy Off.
Good morning.
Morning.
So my first item is recognition of employee of the month for April twenty twenty-three. And I'm proud to inform you that Carrie Williams from the Road and Bridge Department has been chosen for. So I'll read the proclamation, whereas Jackson County has established an employee of the month program to recognize one employee to represent the various department. And whereas Carrie Williams began her employment with Jeff County on April twelfth, two thousand and one, and currently serves as the business manager for the Road and Bridge Department, and has been selected as employee of the month for April twenty twenty-three for the standards that she has displayed in the performance of her job duty. And whereas Ms. Williams is an exemplary employee who demonstrates professionalism in every task she faces, her loyalty and commitment to Jackson County are noticed and admired by her coworkers. With her years of experience, she brings a vast knowledge of the intricate workings of the Road and Bridge Department and is able to provide invaluable assistance to the director and the assistant. And whereas Ms. Williams is a dedicated employee who handles issues that arise in a timely and efficient manner, is dedicated and steps up to the plate when times are tough. As a result, she has built trust with her coworkers and they know they can count on her. This Williams sets a good example for other employees with her work ethic. Now therefore, it be proclaimed that the Board of County Commissioners of Jackson County Florida commencing to congratulate Carrie Williams on her selection as employee of the month for April twenty twenty-three. Congratulations, Carrie. So next I have recognition, years of service recognition. Um, the way we do it is you recognize people for five to fifteen, twenty years of service. You do define them as people here, but. Um, our first is Crystal Basford. Ms. Basford currently holds a position of sergeant with Jackson County Correctional Facility and has been recognized for fifteen years of continuous service to I. Steven Gross, Mr. Gross currently holds a position of sergeant with Jackson County Correctional Facility. And he has been recognized for five years of continuous service. Sometimes we have people that are, you know, it's putting for hours services and I. Um, next time that we have Wade and Lipton Jr., is to the currently held position of sergeant with Jackson County Correctional Facility. He has been recognized for five years of continuous service. Um, our next person is Veronique Stewart, who is in short, current health condition and administrative support brief for Jackson County Correctional Facility and she has been recognized for thirty years of continuous service. Thirty years. Uh, she's not here, so who names the topic? Um, Matthew Norville, this is Norville currently held position of paramedic firefighter for Jackson County Fire and Rescue and is two years from continuous service. Um, Alicia Perkins. This person holds a position of children's emergency manager for Jackson County Public Garden and she has been recognized for five years of continuous service. Ryan Mercer. Mercer currently held position of parking and cycling supervisor for Jackson County Public Works and will be recognized for five years of continuous service. David Verment. Uh, Minister Verment, uh, on current health position of probation assistant and office manager for Jackson County probation facility and has been recognized for ten years of continuous service. Next we have Stacy Bithson. Stacy Bithson currently held the position of probation officer supervisor for Jackson County probation and he is also being recognized for thirty years of continuous service. Um, Donald Knappower, who perhaps our hold position of equipment operator for the Road and Bridge Department and has been recognized for five years of continuous service. We have Willie Wilkins Jr., AKA Peter. Yeah, I want to do, we have two. Anyway, um, this is a current health condition and he took work for the whole of Road and Bridge and has been recognized for twenty-five years of continuous service. We have Daniel Lipton, this is her current health position of equipment operator two for the Road and Bridge Department, she has been recognized for five years of continuous service. Then we, last, we have William McKinnon, who is currently in health condition and environmental service and sex department and cycling department and she has been recognized for four years of continuous service.
William. Let's know this. Appreciate the efforts and hard work and the dedication and my all of it. But I wish to make sense again of every question you have, I appreciate it, I'm willing to myself. All right, let's scoot back here. Listen, let's squeeze in. You got it, congratulations. Hey, babe. Great job, man.
Chairman.
Yes, sir.
Make a motion that we approve the resolution declaring Ms. Williams Employee of the Month and authorize you to sign and award her the two hundred dollar check.
Okay, you heard the motion.
Don't move.
Got a second, got a motion from Commissioner Peacock, a second from Commissioner McKinney. Any questions, clarifications, hearing none, all those in favor of the motion is stated, please signify, raise in the right hand. All opposed, same sign, motion carries unanimously, thank you. Uh, Mr. Potts is not in the audience, I understand, don't see him. So when he comes in, we'll recognize him at that time. Uh, that allows us to complete section number one and move into section number two, which is a public hearing. Item number one on Ms. Daniels is the extension of a development agreement.
Yes, this is a board approval that sent a development agreement for partners for pets. This is a twenty-four month extension and this is, I won't be the date here, but this would would be a twenty-four month extension and we do recommend it.
We'll go into a public, we'll, we'll close out the regular, regular meeting. We'll go into a public hearing. Is there anyone in the audience wishing to speak either for or against the development agreement for partners for pets? Seeing no one in the audience, Fred, is there anyone online that have been, has indicated a desire to speak either for or against this issue?
As a reminder to anybody online, if you'd like to speak for or against this, you may use the star nine feature if called in via telephone or the raise hand feature on Zoom. I see no hands.
Thanks, Brad. Uh, there, there being no one in the audience or online wishing to speak either for or against this development agreement. Chair will entertain, we'll close out the public hearing, go back into a regular meeting. Chair will entertain a motion to. Got a motion from Commissioner Crutchfield.
Second.
Second from Commissioner Peacock, any other questions? Clarifications, hearing none, all those in favor of the motion is stated, please signify, raise in the right hand. All opposed, same sign, motion carries unanimously, thank you. Item number two is a board review and approval for Southern Grape Company LLC, Ms. Daniels.
Request for general development order to construct a nine thousand eight hundred and ten square foot building to be used for a line production and event facility along with retail manufacturing and meeting areas of thirty-one thousand seven hundred and fifteen square feet vehicular use area, including sidewalks. The proposed facility will be located on the east side of Highway thirty-one, approximately one thousand seven hundred and twenty-three feet north of intersection of two thirty-one and seventy-three in unincorporated Jackson County on March twentieth, the planning commission recommended approval to board of county commissioners.
Okay, at this time, we'll close out the regular meeting of the Jackson County Board of County Commissioners, open up a public hearing to hear any public comment. Anyone in the audience wishing to speak either for or against the issuance of a development order for Southern Grape Company? Seeing no hands in the audience, Fred, is there anyone online indicating that they'd like to speak either for or against this development order?
As a reminder, those wishing to speak for or against this may use the raise hand feature on Zoom or star nine via telephone. I've got one hand. Uh, fill in, please state your full name for the record.
Brad, we're not picking that up.
Yeah, he's going to have to move his microphone a little bit further away from his speakers.
Able to hear anything, Fred?
I heard him ask if we could hear him, but that's it.
Say that again.
Hey, break in here. No, it won't work. Yeah, he's got bad feedback whenever he tries to unmute himself.
Okay, uh, well, let's, with that being the case, and who was that that was, had called in, was that Philip McKinney? And I'm assuming that he would be speaking in favor of the issuance of this development order. Um, with that being the case, since we can't hear Mr. McKinney, um, we'll go ahead and close out the public hearing and open back up a, the, the regular meeting.
Chairman, I make a motion, we approve this request.
Got a motion from Commissioner Peacock. Second from Commissioner Branch, any other questions, clarifications, hearing none. All those in favor of the motion is stated, please signify, raise in the right hand, all opposed, same sign. Motion carries four to zero with Commissioner McKinney abstaining due to a conflict of interest. Okay, that takes us down to item number three under the public hearings, which is the board adoption of increased utility fee resolution, Ms. Daniels.
Sir, this is for board consideration, this is what had to come back before the resolution in public hearing uh, for the attached fee schedule.
Yeah, I do apologize, the attached resolution is actually incorrect. I handed out ahead of the meeting, the corrected version, just very minor changes, but should have no impact on adoption today.
Is the resolution, Rhett, that's included, is it, is the resolution itself correct?
The difference is some of the fees, so the impact fee, no, I'm sorry, not impact fees, the base fees and the usage rates are slightly higher than the one I handed out versus the one in your packet.
Okay, got it. Heard that explanation, let's, we'll close out our regular meeting, go into a public hearing to receive any comment regarding the proposed resolution. Do you want to read the resolution by title? Part of taking any comment?
And the resolution of the Board of County Commissioners of Jackson County, Florida, establishing revised utility rates and fees for residential and commercial water and sewer utility services providing for an effective date.
Thank you. Anyone in the audience wishing to speak either for or against the proposed resolution? Seeing no one in the audience indicating a desire to speak. Oh, I'm sorry, come, come forward to the podium and state your name for the record, please, ma'am.
Good morning.
Good morning.
Commission chair, my name's Carolyn Killings. I reside at twenty-seven fifty-one Petrell Lane in Marianna. I am a single person in my household. I am here probably six months out of the year. Uh, my water bill, if I don't use a drop of water, is nine dollars and it's going up. Now, last month, for whatever reason, uh, my bill said that I use five thousand gallons of water. I, I find that hard to believe unless the meter wasn't being read properly before. I know the ground was tore up around the three meters that were there for a couple of months and they were doing some kind of repairs. So I'd like to know, um, why are we paying, first of all, a base rate of nine dollars if I don't use a drop of water? And then on top of that nine dollars, for every gallon that I use, it's going up. And you're telling me today that it's going to go up even higher. And, and the water quality, I must say, is a concern for me because at least once a month I have to use vinegar to clean my tea kettle because there's so much lime in the water. And I take issue with that. And the price is continuously going up, but there's no improvement to it. So I, I would like to see you guys improve at least the water quality if you're going to increase the rates.
I do know that we have been working on a number of water quality issues. Um, Rhett, you want to speak to that real quick?
Sure. So everything within the water system is well within state standards, but we are working with three separate contractors to improve or to replace the filters that we use at our well sites so that all the water that goes into the potable system goes through a, a filter and backwash cycle to make sure that it is as clean as possible before it is cleared with chlorine and goes into service.
With the lime rate, that's my concern. I'm, I don't, you know, even though I'm gone six months, when I come back, the water that sits in the bowl, because nobody goes in the house, has a black ring around it when I come back. You know, and it's just sitting there. So, you know, there, there's something not right with the water for that to be happening. And the lime rate is my greatest concern about it for now.
Have you had a plumber check any of your indoor plumbing to ensure that there's not a leak going on, a toilet running or something like that?
No, I, no, there's no leak on, not on the inside or on the outside, because I would see the water.
Rhett, can you, can you get, get her address and check the meter and make sure that it's not something going on with the meter? Uh, just for clarification, though, you're speaking against the utility rate increases. Thank you. Okay. Any, anyone else in the audience wishing to speak either for or against the resolution that lives on the table for approval? Seeing no one else in the audience, Fred, is there anyone online wishing to speak either for or against the resolution?
If anyone online would like to speak for or against, they may use the raise hand feature on Zoom or star nine via telephone. I see no hands.
Thank you, Fred. Okay, with there being no one else in the audience wishing to speak either for or against, no one online wishing to speak either for or against the resolution, uh, we will close out the public hearing, open back up our regular meeting, uh, word of the wishes of the board.
Chairman, I make a motion, we approve this request.
Got a motion from Commissioner Peacock to approve the resolution, ability rate increase resolution.
Of course.
Commissioner Branch.
If we approve this this morning, what is that going to do with the negotiation we have with the city?
That is a, a good question. Uh, Will Ann and I and Rhett had a follow-up meeting with the city, the new city manager and the old city manager last week. Um, they're still in the process of, uh, Bill Harrington is still in the process.
Yes, sir, he's actually coming up this week. He plans to be here Thursday, or I'm sorry, Wednesday, Thursday, Friday to make contact with myself, uh, city of Marianna and the city of Cottondale to iron out some of the details.
It, it does have to, those, these rates have to be figured into the calculation for sure. Uh, I asked the question that if we, if we do move forward with these utility rate increases, it does not necessarily mean that we've got to move forward with the, any additional improvements uh, to the, to the sewer system, correct?
Correct, so if we, or if you guys are, approve this today, my follow-up question would be, do we want to continue with the SRF loan application that was intended to complete the, the rest of the Indian Springs Water Project? And at that point, again, up to, to you all, what we end up doing. But if we, just increasing the rates has no impact on our negotiations with Cottondale and Marianna. However, if we are to move forward with the SRF loan and assume any additional debt, that will cease any, any discussions.
My, yeah, my, I guess my opinion on this was, you know, it's been a while since we've been studying this. Uh, I personally got to vote against it because I just feel like we ought to get through the negotiations before we, we put these rate increases into effect. Um, I know the Commissioner Peacock is, is been in favor of this and feels like we've been losing money for, you know, a number of years and it's weird that we can get these rate increases in place. And I certainly don't mean to speak for you, but that's been your position on this.
That's true. Uh, it's not fair to the people in Grand Ridge. That's true, uh, it's not fair to the people in Grand Ridge, which needs and Malone to subsidize the water and sewer project here in Marianna. Uh, I think that we're losing money, we've been losing money on this project. This rate study has been done and I think it's a fair assessment of the rates. We are still cheaper than Marianna, uh, when we do this, our, with our adjusted rates. Marianna just had a twenty percent increase in their rates and come August one, they're going to get another ten percent increase. So our citizens are better off with Jackson County than they are with Marianna. Uh, for a lot of reasons and primarily the rate reason. You've taken, look at all the numbers and it's plain that it's cheaper for them to be with us. I'm, I think we need to go ahead and approve the rates today, get it over with, and then we deal with the giving away of the system later.
Selling.
Selling, giving, it was, initially it was giving, so if we're selling, uh, that's a different story. But, uh, we're losing money every day we sit here.
Well, and that's true and, uh, we'll be, even after these rate increases go in effect, we'll still be losing money first year. Um, and more than likely with, with the, with the improvements that need to be made to the system and the additional personnel that I think is gonna have to be hired to make the system operate the way that it should. Um, I think that we're gonna be looking, even in the future, at even higher rates. My contention is, and I've said this a number of times, that I feel like by combining the two systems, uh, those customers that would be on that combined system, uh, in the long run will, will be better off because of economy of scale. We've got a motion, we've got a motion on the table.
Yeah, I want to address something you just said, though. If you look at it, everybody got this. And if you look in there, if we had adopted the rates back when it was initially proposed, we would not have be losing money, we have wasted, well, we're into April, six months, we've wasted six months in the year. So, yes, we probably will not break even this year, but it will be less that we will be subsidizing the system. After that, the system will continue to grow, uh, adding the, uh, water and everything to, or Indian Springs and Blue Springs will continue to make that system more solid and sound. But the rates that Marianna is charging, and I've got their rates, they're, uh, we are cheaper. When you go through it, we, our rates are going to be lower. So I, to me, it's a no-brainer. Uh, I'm not in favor of, and I don't want to combine the two, I just wanted to talk today about the rates. Giving away the system is another discussion we can have later. We adjust our rates today, we're still lower than Marianna.
Okay, you've got a motion on the-
I do.
You've got a motion on the, uh, table.
Question, how long if we don't approve it, how long is it gonna be before they get their study done?
Rhett, what was the, we asked that at the meeting, uh, we have an idea how long it will be back, uh, be before Bill Harrington will have, uh, his complete study done, you recall?
I'll know better after his visit this week, but my goal is to have something formalized ahead of either entities, uh, budget discussions that are coming up, because I know it's gonna have a big impact on the next year and following year, so that's, that's my goal.
This process has been going on for months, months, almost a year. Close to a year and we're still kicking the can down the road.
I was just going to say that part of that has been trying to just get to a place where we could formally analyze it. I mean, I still don't feel like there's been a true, um, analyzation of, is it even feasible? If we, if we get this report back and they say, I mean, Bill Harrington may say, you know what, with taking Cottondale out and these different factors, it's really not as feasible as it once was, but until we have that piece and we say, can we transfer the loan? Can we transfer the, you know, there's a lot of, there's a lot of still question mark that that MOU authorized that we're just now diving into.
We're a year away from anything happening.
Then we may, we may be several months away from formally transferring something, but we're, I would say, very close to being able to come back and say, yes or no, this is feasible or not.
Um, Mr. Chairman, I'm not for putting no undue burden on the citizen no more than what they already paying, but I know we cannot sustain, system cannot sustain itself like it is now, we definitely want to have a rate increase at some point, at some time. Uh, but Rhett, for the SRF loans is concerned. I mean, how that would affect us if we don't increase the rate back now?
They will not award the, uh, the loan agreement, or they will not approve it, so the SRF fund or whatever you want to phrase it, they are awaiting the increased resolution for them to process the agreement and then that would come back. So without the resolution of increased fees being submitted to the state, that issue would be a dead topic.
Well, see, that's my position, I believe system will grow at some point in time. We just cannot, you know, continue, like you said, kick the can down the road. That's just my thought.
Yeah, we've got a, we've got a motion, but we still don't have a second to the motion. You want to restate your motion, which is to basically approve the resolution?
That's correct. Well, let me ask this, if we approved this, this resolution, we can hold off on the loan application or whatever until we negotiate with the city? You can, we can approve the rates, okay? Yeah, if we're gonna stay in the business or even if, if we don't approve the rates when Marianna gets it, they're gonna get a sticker shock is gonna happen to them. But we can approve the rates and we can approve going forward with revolving loan, we don't have to accept it if it's approved.
But, but also part of the discussions that we've had, and again, until we get through with this, until Bill Harrington gets through with his analyzation of the system, there is a possibility that the rates, the current rates, not the rates that are getting ready, potentially getting ready to be, uh, increased, but the existing rates may be able to stay as they are. There, that's a, that's a possibility.
That is a possibility, it's also possible they'll go down to a nickel a gallon, but it ain't gonna happen.
Yeah, that's not-
This guy Bill Harrington that you're using, he's the one that said our system was worth four million dollars, right? He did the initial survey, said our system was four million dollars. And we've got over forty, probably between forty and fifty million dollars worth of assets.
Yeah, but the, the, the value, the value of a system like this is not what you pay for.
Well, it makes me-
It's losing money, I mean, it's been losing money, so, I mean, it's what somebody will pay for.
It's been losing money because we haven't had customers. We add the customers in Indian Springs, we add the customers along Blue Springs and we can add the ones around the pond and it will become more solid. I'm not looking to make sack full of money off of it, I just want to see the system solid and let's provide good, safe, clean, reliable water and our service to our people.
And, and my thinking is, again, by combining the two systems, that would be the most efficient way of doing that.
If you combine the two systems, then the city of Marianna controls your board. They will dictate-
I don't, I don't believe that's true. I mean, are you, are you think that they would not want those areas to grow?
I'm just telling you, they've already said they did not want to put water in Indian Springs. They're not gonna put water down Blue Springs Highway.
Only because it's not, it's not, uh, economically feasible to do it at this point in time.
Well, that's not true. The state's basically giving you the system.
Not for water.
They, I know, if there, it's fifty percent, okay? So you're basically gonna get the fifty percent, I think you'll find that it is feasible to do it, but, uh, that's my motion. I, I feel strongly about it because it affects the constituents in my district. Do I want to raise the rates? Absolutely not, but I also don't want other members of my district having to subsidize the system and us dithering around doing nothing.
I, I, I agree with you. My only concern, I don't, I don't have a concern with the water. I think that's, uh, that, that can become selfless. I'm afraid of the sewer, the city, or whatever we call it. Uh, I've not talked to anyone in any other county that's told me anything, but that's a另一个. We just have it because we have it. The, the water is fine, I'm just, I don't want, and I know we're gonna have to go up on the rates, I know we'll have to do that, there's nowhere around it if we keep it. But I, and, and maybe that will fund the water side. I don't know if it'll ever fund the sewer side. I think that's just gonna be, you're talking about making other people pay. I'm afraid that people in Graceville or Grand Ridge or Sneads or wherever offered is going to have to pay for that second system in the line.
We've, we've got, we've got the sewer system because of the spring protection program. That, that's the reason, I mean, that's, that's the, the impetus for having the state give us all those dollars to put those sewer systems in place.
I understand that it didn't cost us anything, but we gotta maintain it.
Right.
How much did we spend this last week on them, on the deal that, at the, uh?
About fifteen thousand dollars in contract labor, not counting in-house labor materials and overtime.
And that system out there is always doing. I mean, it's gonna continue, we're gonna have to continue to maintain that thing at another cheap rate.
As part of the revolving loans, there is money coming to upgrade that.
Do?
Yes, that whole lift station up there, but I think based upon what Rhett showed me, I don't think it was installed properly, somebody didn't demuck, they laid a pipe over monkey land and you got to go back to- No, you don't, go in there and demuck, it's what I would do.
We lived with it last week.
No, no, you've got, what I'm saying is, we work out where we can get in there and demuck it and put that pipe in properly. So it's not flexing, it's laying on spongy dirt and when you got twelve inches of water and coming through on, under pressure, it's gonna move.
It's causing the pipe to break and, and spills.
But if you can go in there at some point, bypass it, I, I don't know how they would do it, I know what I would do, but get around it, dig it out, get it, go down as far as you have to go, backfill it and put rock in there, it's all that breaking problem.
Hopefully, if, uh, they approve, the rate go up, we apply for the loan and we reject the loan. Can you apply again for the loan or so we're on the long part?
It would go to the next funding cycle, so they have held us on, if we do not approve this resolution and send to the state, this current application will be delisted and then we will have to wait till the next funding cycle.
You'll be a year away.
About a year, yeah.
If we, we reject this motion, then it still holds the loan opening till we settle what it's gonna go or is it gonna be?
No, if, if this, if this fails today, then the current SRF application goes away. We would have to reapply.
In other words, for the, for this loan application to go forward, this rate increase has to be approved.
What I'm saying is, if you don't approve it today, and, and that's what I was asking, how long is it gonna be before they get their study, say if it's a couple of months, would that loan still be available a couple of months if, if something, whether we still keep it or the city gets it?
No.
The question is the timing of this.
Based on what I've been told, they're bending over backwards to keep it open for us.
That's correct.
So we need to do what, whatever we're gonna do, we need to do it today.
I do know you can't lose money or, or something, you got money gotta come somewhere and it's not fair to take money to pay for something other, you don't make money. Um, and I like to say with the increase, that rate increase, it's kind of like you don't have, I, my problem is if it's gonna be a few months and, and we make this decision, it's gonna kind of hurt that process and, and, but if it's not, it's gonna pretty much stay neutral, we'll lose money for a couple of months to find out that, but then if that, we don't, that don't go, then we just continue on, just lost a couple more months. That's, that's why I'm getting at, otherwise, then need to go up on it.
Okay, we've got a motion on the, on the table.
That's-
Got a motion from Commissioner Peacock, second from Commissioner Crutchfield, to approve the resolution, any other questions?
I just would like to say, just comment for contingent upon, uh, I'm meeting with Marianna as well, for the whole rate study as, as a whole.
Right.
I would approve that, contingent upon rate study with Marianna as well.
So, but your motion-
Before putting it into effect, for the rate increase, but we need to go ahead and prove this resolution now.
Right, your motion is to approve the resolution as is.
That's correct.
Yeah, and, and your second was, you, you seconded that motion, okay. All right, any other questions? Hearing none, all those in favor of the motion is stated, please signify by raising the right hand, all opposed, same sign, motion carries four to one, with myself voting, uh, no. Um, okay.
Now, with that, do we want to submit this to the SRF loan and get that agreement back to us? I do believe it would be a fairly quick process, I mean, they've really been, just been waiting on this, so once this is submitted, I could potentially have a, an agreement back by, maybe not the next meeting, but the first meeting in May, so.
This is, what, what you're asking, Rhett, is do we want to go ahead and authorize you to, uh, submit the grant application?
Loan application, yes, sir.
This is for the water project.
Correct.
Okay, and what's the, the, uh, loan amount?
Three million, three hundred eighty-one thousand, nine hundred fifteen dollars.
And once, uh, once this loan application is submitted, uh, they'll, uh, let us know something pretty quickly and we'll have to make a decision as to whether to move forward or not. We're not, once that loan is accepted, from what we've been able to understand is that more than likely means the city will not move forward with continuing to, uh, uh, consider taking the system.
Correct.
Now, that could potentially change with the information that Bill Harrington has, but more than likely that is the case, is that, that pretty much places, uh, that option of, of selling the system to the city off the table.
Well, I think we need to go ahead with the loan application and what that does, it gives us some time, or I thought y'all were finished with Marianna, but, uh, for you to get that discussion a little further down the road. Uh, if we go ahead and get the ball rolling on this, then we can wait and see. And, and like, we can reject it.
Yeah, what's the time, what's the timeline on, uh, being able to, what do you think the timeline is on here and back from, uh, is it Northwest Florida Water Management District or is it DEP?
DEP.
DEP, what's the time, pretty quickly?
I would, yeah, I mean, they're, they got everything ready, they gotta input this resolution and send it right back.
You, you think we may have it for the next meeting?
Possibly, I mean, that's only two weeks.
The first meeting in May for sure. At that point in time, uh, a decision will have to be made, as Commissioner Peacock said, uh, as to whether to accept that loan or not, and whether, uh, Bill Harrington is able to get his study completed by the same time, we don't know.
And the other factor, and I'll handle this myself, but communicating with the contractor, because the Indian Springs Phase Two Water Project has already been bid out and it's been a number of months since those came back, so I'm just have to communicate with him and make sure those bid amounts are still gonna be good and, you know, see where that contract lies. But I'll, I'll take care of that, so I'll send off the resolution to the SRF folks, get the loan agreement back to be considered.
We hadn't really decided that yet.
Mr. Chairman, I make a motion that we approve going forward with the loan, uh, the SRF loan application at this point. Contingent upon us getting more information and then we'll make a decision.
Got a motion from Commissioner Peacock to move to, uh, direct staff to move forward with, uh, submitting the, uh, grant, the loan app- Got a motion from Commissioner Peacock to move to a direct staff to move forward with submitting the uh, grant, the loan application to DEP. Got a second from Commissioner McKinney. Any other questions? Comments, clarifications, all those in favor of the motion is stated, please signify by raising the right hand. All opposed, same sign. Motion carries three to two. Uh, with Commissioner Branch and myself opposing submitting the grant application.
Understood.
Okay, thank you. Alrighty, let's uh, head us down to community development. In section three, which is Partners for Pets Temporary Alcohol Consumption Permit, Miss Daniels.
This is uh, board approval of a temporary alcoholic beverage permit for partners for pets. This is a event that's going on the weekend of April fourteenth through sixteenth. And because it requires board approval, uh, and the time constraint, we put it as an addition for your consideration.
Mr. Chairman, I make a motion we approve this request.
Got a motion from Commissioner Peacock to approve the request. Got a second from Commissioner Crutchfield. Any questions, clarifications? Judy, anything you need to bring to our attention while you're? Okay, got a motion and a second. Any, any other questions, comments? Clarifications, hearing none, all those in favor of the motion is stated, we signify by raising the right hand. All opposed, same sign. Motion carries unanimously. Thank you. Alrighty, moving down the agenda to uh, reports and requests. Uh, item number one is this consent agenda items. I assume everyone's had a chance to look through the uh, consent agenda.
The most, yeah.
Got a motion from Commissioner McKinney to approve the consent agenda, second from Commissioner Peacock. Any other questions or any questions, comments, hearing none, all those in favor of the motion, please signify by raising the right hand. All opposed, same sign. Motion carries unanimously. Uh, we took care of item number two earlier in the uh, uh, meeting. Item number three is board approval of nine-one-one state grant. Miss Daniels.
Um, yeah, Mr. Warren is here.
Good morning.
Good morning.
Uh, so this is uh, requesting approval for years two through five of a regional uh, call routing project grant from the state.
This is an ongoing thing, right?
Yes.
We've seen.
Yeah, we've approved.
I make a motion, we approve this.
And this is years two through five. Got a motion, got a motion from Commissioner Peacock to approve, second from Commissioner Branch. Any other questions, comments? Clarifications here, none, all those in favor of the motion is stated, please signify by raising the right hand. All opposed, same sign. Motion carries unanimously. Thank you, Daniel. Item number four is uh, board approval of a fifty-eight forty-five TDC grant for Rockadon event, Miss Daniels.
For Derek Park, twenty-three meeting, the TDC board voted to approve a five thousand eight hundred and forty-five dollar grant for the spring twenty-three Rockadon event. This is a weed farm paddling event that will take place at Florida Cavern State Park.
Okay, you've heard the explanation. Got a motion from Commissioner Branch, second from Commissioner McKinney. Any questions, clarifications, comments? I will say that this is exactly the type of event, uh, I love Kelsey's here, but uh, this is exactly the type of event that the TDC should be funding. I think it's gonna have a, a huge impact uh, with three hundred to four hundred people being in the area and uh, falls squarely within, you know, the, the type of events that we'd like to get. With that being said, all those in favor of the motion, please, stated, please signify by raising the right hand. All opposed, same sign. Motion carries unanimously. Thank you. Item number five, board approval of amendments to the Medicare Ground Ambulance Data Collection Services, right, Miss Daniels?
This is just a uh, correction to the, y'all already approved this. There was a change of the incorrect reference to Volusia County, I believe, in this one. Um, uh, no, Palm Beach County. If there were disaster, that contract be corrected.
Basically amended con, because we've already approved this. Got a motion from Commissioner Crutchfield, second from Commissioner Peacock. Any other questions? Comments, all those in favor of the motion is stated, please signify by raising the right hand. All opposed, same sign. Motion carries unanimously. Thank you. Item number six is board approval of amendments to an agreement with the PCS group, uh, PC group. Um, Miss Daniels?
Same situation, a slight update to the contract. We're just asking for the board to approve the amendment.
Okay, heard the request.
I'm gonna approve.
Got a motion from Commissioner McKinney. Second from Commissioner Crutchfield. Any other questions, comments? Hearing none, all those in favor of the motion is stated, please signify by raising the right hand. All opposed, same sign. Motion carries unanimously. Item number seven is approval of the CEI Task Report with HMB on Charm Road, Miss Daniels.
This is to uh, award to HMBCI Task Report for Charm Road and email a fifty thousand five hundred and fifty dollars.
You've heard the explanation from Miss Daniels. I've got a question. When, when, uh, Jeffrey, when will that work actually start? We have. Okay, very good.
I make a motion we approve.
Got a motion from Commissioner Peacock, second from Commissioner Branch. Any other questions? Comments, clarifications here, none, all those in favor of the motion is stated, please signify by raising the right hand. All opposed, same sign. Motion carries unanimously. Item number eight is board approval of an amendment to the CDBG DRH MGP match program grant.
Yes, this is just to end the timeframe on this particular grant to do, uh, this is HMGP DR and it's to do with generators.
Heard the explanation, got a motion by Commissioner Branch, Commissioner Peacock, uh, second from Commissioner Crutchfield. Any questions, comments, hearing none, all those in favor of the motion is stated, please symbolize by raising the right hand. All opposed, same sign. Motion carries unanimously. Item number nine on the agenda is board approval of Shangri-La Spring Protection Project FDEP Grant Agreement, Miss Daniels.
To accept a grant in the amount of one million twenty-eight thousand one hundred and sixteen dollars. And this is to do a number of items listed in your packet at Shangri-La. And this is a grant that we applied for, something came available and they have awarded more than we requested. Um, so it's a real positive grant for that area.
Heard the explanation.
We get the Rev to explain what they're gonna do out there.
Red, could you give us kind of a summarization of the work scope, as you understand it?
Yes, sir. So I'll actually be meeting with DHM, you know, later this week, or first part of next, to have a dual meeting on the campground that we've been working on as well as this uh, loan application. But the primary function is gonna be bank stabilization along the waterway between Blue Springs and Shangri-La. Doing some site work at Shangri-La itself and trying to renovate the ground so that it's more accessible and safer for people to come in. And then once that's complete, we'll start working on other, other funding options for the building, the actual structure. So that we can get that into some sort of usable function.
Any possibility, you said bank stabilization, are they gonna put in sidewalk?
Uh, we may try that with the additional funds. So there is quite a bit of storm debris along the actual Shangri-La spring cliff, however you wanna phrase it. So we definitely want to clean that area up as it is such a, uh, well-visited area. And then that is something on my list to negotiate with or discuss with uh, DHM and the state. If they would allow us to put back some sort of floating boardwalk system along that bluff.
Is there any possibility we can get some sort of a boat launch in there? You and I had talked.
We have, and I don't think that would be feasible under this, but it's, it's not off the table for the property in general.
Red, when do you think you'll have that, that initial meeting?
I, I'm not sure. Well, I've just been emailing in this meeting. We had it scheduled for um, Wednesday. Something came up. So now we're looking at potentially next week or we're not real sure.
Let me know when that meeting is. I would like to attend if at all possible.
Absolutely.
Well, you can, you can go too. You, if you wanna go, you can go. And if you can't go, I'll go. How about that? Uh, we've done a lot of, architecturally, done a lot of work out there, so I've got a lot. Okay, uh, we've got, did we get a motion?
I make a motion we approve this request.
Motion from Commissioner Peacock, a second from Commissioner Crutchfield. Any other questions? Comments, hearing none, all those in favor of the motion is stated, please signify by raising the right hand. All opposed, same sign. Motion carries unanimously. Thank you. Uh, item number ten is work authorization uh, for Endeavor, Endeavor Conference Center redesign. Miss Daniels?
This is board approval of authorization. So the building was previously signed to eighty percent plans, which included additional area for an emergency shelter. Uh, this redesign will eliminate the shelter portion. And so this is uh, a hundred and forty-seven thousand dollars, one hundred and forty-seven, one twenty-five. And I ask the board to approve this so that we can begin work to convert that back into just a conference center.
Chairman.
Yes, sir.
I think we've already passed this motion.
I think we, we directed, I think we directed, um, uh, we directed David's team to move forward with doing this. But we never did approve actually a fee proposal.
That's correct. This is, you've not approved the work authorization, so.
We approved the changing it though to make it a uh,
Conference center only.
Conference center. You were going to take out the uh, pardoning aspect of it.
That's correct. This, this actually changes, um, you know, the design significantly, electrically, mechanically, architecturally. Uh, so it's basically what this is, is approving uh, the wo- the work authorization for moving forward with the redesign.
That hundred and forty-seven thousand, that do a lot in heat job?
Will that do a lot in?
A lot in heat job, would it finish it?
That would finish the design and, and the development of the plant.
We already have plans, though.
Yeah, but they were for a, they were for the uh, combination. They were for the, they were for the combination, um, uh, emergency needs, emergency special needs shelter. This is, this is changing it. This is going back to eliminating all of that addition on the north side. Eliminating all of the hardening aspects of it, um, and all of the electrical, you know, had emergency power that was no longer gonna be there. So this is, we're changing all of that, going back to a single-use facility. We need a motion. Got a motion from Commissioner Branch, second from Commissioner Crutchfield. Any other questions?
Lot of money.
Lot of work.
Cut and pasting.
More than cut and paste. Wish it was, yeah. Got a motion and a second. Any other questions? Commissioner McKinney?
No.
No, okay. Uh, all those in favor of the motion is stated, please signify by raising the right hand. All opposed, same sign. I need to recuse myself as we're one of the companies that are working uh, under David Melvin's contract with the county. Uh, so motion passes four to zero. Um, item number. Yes, sir.
Now, these, this money will come from the TDC lockbox, right?
Well, from the TDC is what they, way back when, when we started this, uh, lockbox.
Yeah, that's what we said, lock, lockbox money, money that's set aside for the convention center.
I just wanted to point out, if the pot comes around, if we could jump to him.
Yes, we absolutely can. Uh, if the board will allow us, let's jump back and recognize uh, Mr. Potts. Hunter's come in. Uh, I think everyone knows that uh, Hunter's been with the county for a, a number of years now. And has elected to uh, take a position with, uh, I think David Melvin's group. Hunter, is that correct? Uh, we certainly are gonna miss you, um, and uh, your dedication to Jackson County. Uh, my dealings with you have proved that you've been a very thorough, I always had a, a very thorough and meticulous approach to all of the, the projects that you've been involved in. And I know I speak for the board when we say that uh, we're certainly very appreciative of, of the work that you've done here and the, uh, the energy and effort you brought to the projects that you've taken, uh, taken on. Will, and anything you wanna add to that?
Well, we, we put together a little proclamation form, so I'll read that. Whereas it is right and fitting to express our appreciation to Hunter Potts and honor him for his dedicated service to the residents of Jackson County for over seven years. And whereas Mr. Potts has led the county through many challenges, changes and developments, always looking for ways to improve processes for internal efficiencies as well as citizen services. And whereas Mr. Potts has worked tirelessly to lead the county in its long-term recovery efforts after Hurricane Michael, including securing many millions of dollars in grant funding, as well as overseeing countless projects that have made the county even better than it was before the arrival of Michael. And whereas Mr. Potts took the initiative to bring grant administration in-house for multiple key grants, keeping funds in-house that would have otherwise been spent to administer those grants. And whereas over his seven years of employment, Mr. Potts is concerned for the employees and citizens of Jackson County and work ethic has served as an exceptional example for all county employees. Now therefore be it proclaimed that the Jackson County Board of County Commissioners wishes to express our sincere appreciation to Hunter for his loyalty to Jackson County and wish him much happiness as he begins his exciting new chapter in his life. The board urges all residents and employees to join us in congratulating Hunter on an outstanding career with Jackson County and wishing him many continued years of happiness and good health, proclaim this eleventh day of April twenty twenty-three.
Very appropriate, very appropriate. Uh, any of the other board members like to uh, say a couple of words to Hunter before he comes up to the podium?
Yes, I would just like to say, Chairman, Hunter, you, you know, you come up with my child.
Yes, sir.
And uh, you and your brother and all, and that's, it's so, it does my heart so good, it feels so good to see you going out, getting your education and coming back to the community and contributing. Continue to, to Scott Store, but young man, you wanna do great things.
Hunter, you've done an outstanding job, even though I did give you a hard time. We got through it, right?
Yes, sir.
But uh, he's very knowledgeable and willing to work. And he will express his opinion, which is good. And uh, I think you have a very bright future. Continue working and uh, stay on the straight and narrow path and you will succeed in life.
We only worked together for a short time, but you're so impressive to be as young, young as you are and have the business mind about you. That just, that blows my mind that you're always on point with everything you do, everything that you submit. Thank you. I, I hate to see you go.
I didn't, hardly a note, Hunter, before I came here, but I, I realized his background, the family, damn it, hard workers. And I noticed he has the same work ethic and as good as you're carrying on their legacy. And congratulations.
As I said, Hunter, also, uh, you know, I've had the opportunity to work with you on a number of architectural-related projects. And it's always been very impressive, uh, a young man like yourself to be as reliable, uh, and dedicated and also thorough and meticulous with the information that you provide. You will be missed and I certainly appreciate everything that you've done for Jackson County and wish you, on behalf of the board, wish you the best as you move forward.
Y'all will approve the proclamation if you want to submit it to me.
Motion from Commissioner Peacock to approve the proclamation, second from Commissioner McKinney. Any other questions? Hearing none, all those in favor of the motion is stated, please signify by raising the right hand. All opposed, same sign. Motion carries unanimously. It's that proclamation there.
And while y'all are moving into the place, I was just gonna share that, uh, we've kinda recognized Hunter, this is like the third time. So he's really trying to get a public recognition, but uh, Hunter came to admin from, he, he just kept applying for jobs. He was trying to move up in the organization and we teased with him and say that he just kept showing up in interviews and uh, stuff that he had no business doing. He had no experience. Um, and so I said to him, just keep trying, you know, something will come. And so finally the housing grants coordinator happened. And uh, he was great at it, but he only stayed there for a minute because as soon as I found a place in admin, uh, which was actually my assistant at the time, I went to Hunter and I said, uh, you know, this is an opportunity to come up to admin. If you're willing to take it on an interim basis, then give it a try. And he said, well, let me think about it. And, and so he did. And it was just very shortly that the Administrative Services Director came available. And uh, not only did he take on that role, uh, but he, I, I, I don't wanna say single-handedly because everyone has a part in long-term recovery, but he single-handedly wrangled it. And he got projects moving and money coming to Jackson County that were just at a standstill. They were just sitting there waiting for some leadership. And he did that. He had no experience doing that. He dove in, he read manuals, he met people. He, he just figured it out. He literally figured out how to do long-term recovery. Um, and then he transitioned the role into something it had really never been. Um, and so, which, you know, by the way, Hunter, you brought all this stuff in-house and then you left us. And so, um, so Bridget is going to be the interim and she's going to do a phenomenal job. But no one can replace Hunter. but no one can replace Hunter, nor would we want them to. So thank you, Hunter, for your time with us. And the cool thing is he came to me when, when he was thinking about doing this and he said, my heart's beating really fast just talking about it. I said, mine is too. But he said, I can help more of Jackson County in this role. I can go to these cities and more officially help them and I would not hold them back for anything in the world. So we're going to miss them though, being, being right outside of.
Wish you the best of luck, Hunter.
Thank you.
Okay, moving, uh, back into the agenda and down the agenda at the same time, item number eleven. A board approval of electronic bidding contract with Central Auction House. Ms. Daniels.
Yes, so this is a request to approve the contract with Central Auction House. Uh, it's one year at no cost to us for us to have an opportunity to try it out. This is not uncommon. A lot of these services will offer their, their services at no cost to give you a chance to see if you like it. Um, it has been approved by legal and so for those that may not know, we had a company called Merstel. Um, and so basically what this does for the county is when we have something that we really need a lot of people to know about, it sends it out into a database and it has a lot more exposure to what we're trying to accomplish. Right now, we're just using our website and so we're counting on people coming looking for things, which just, you know, is not effective. And so we really need a service that will allow for electronic bidding. People can, uh, apply or bid online. And then secondly, it goes out to hundreds of vendors. So when it's that project, like the housing project endeavor and these things that we want the nation to know about, this is why we need this service.
Be- before I, uh, recognize Commissioner Peacock, one of my concerns with this was just making sure uh, that this company, uh, has a good vendor list that includes, uh, a lot of those companies that would typically be interested in these projects. And I, and I met with Sarah, uh, and Nicole and was assured that this company will, will have that same, uh, vendor list, uh, to make sure that not only are we reaching out, uh, to vendors nationwide, but, uh, those that would typically be interested uh, in a, a road, uh, paving project or an architectural project, whatever the project would be, uh, that those are, those people are not missed as, as, as well. And I, I've got that, uh, concern, uh, addressed. Mr. Peacock?
Yeah, what will it cost us after the one year?
Ultimately, there's an option, so, uh, two hundred and fifty dollars a month. Or, uh, there's a second option, which is, uh, we pay nothing and then the vendors, in order to download the information, have to have a subscription to the service. Um, which has a bridge we can cross, you know, in a year. Uh, but there is an option where it's two hundred and fifty dollars a month for us and then whoever has access to our bid documents or the vendors have paid a subscription fee, uh, and so then it's, you know, no cost.
That, that decision doesn't have to be made until a, another year from now.
That's right. So we may not be like.
Chairman, I'd like a motion.
Well, you got a motion from Commissioner Peacock. Second from Commissioner Branch. I only have one other question. In the handout, it says, um, expended or requested three thousand dollars. What is on the second page? Is that?
Um, I think that if we move forward, that we're not, we're not be paying anything at this time. So it's a little, little misleading. That's what it would be in a year from now if we renew this and we went the route where we pay.
Yeah, okay. Uh, you've heard the explanation and the request from Ms. Daniels. You got a motion from, uh, Commissioner Peacock, a second from Commissioner Branch. Any other questions? Hearing none, all those in favor of the motion to signify by raising the right hand. All opposed, same sign. Motion carries unanimously. Uh, item number twelve, uh, board approval to allow Jackson County Recycling to apply for a DEP small county consolidated waste grant.
This is just our annual request for POTS for the solidated waste grant for twenty-three, twenty-four.
How much is it?
Um, how much can we get through this?
Nine.
Seventy?
Ninety?
Ninety-three.
Yeah. Is that a?
It's the same amount?
It's same as the past three years, but you could be nine thousand nine hundred nine.
Right.
One of the counties. Population.
So if any of the counties exceed that population threshold, uh, those dollars that went to the, the county get put back into the, uh, the pot and, and which we distributed.
Same allocation every year. And they distribute based on counties and that's what's.
Also, I could, you know.
She got a motion from Commissioner McKinney, a second from Commissioner Peacock to approve, uh, the, uh, the grant application. Uh, any other questions? Hearing none, all those in favor of the motion as stated, please signify by raising the right hand. The same sign, all opposed, same sign. Motion carries unanimously. Uh, item number thirteen is, uh, board approval of contract with the broadband consultant work authorizations. Ms. Daniels?
So on February twenty-seventh, twenty-three, the board ranked Finley Engineering as the top-ranked firm for RFP twenty-three oh-three broadband consulting services. Um, following that, county staff has met with Finley to negotiate the contract details. And so we have two task work orders attached to your package. Uh, we're actually recommending that we only approve, uh, task order number two at this time, which is ten thousand dollars. And so, let me back up. Finley's already been working for us, um, essentially for free to help us supply for a grant that would cover that eighty-three thousand dollar task work order. And then they, they've done some other consulting with us and, and doing some phone calls and they, so we're recommending that we authorize the ten thousand dollar task work order that would be approved out of contingency that would at least have them something that they can continue that are going to be on a call with us or yet today. Um, and also any other grants that come up, that kind of thing. But we are hoping we are awarded the grant that can get them the task work order number one. So you can do task work order number one contingent on the grant being secured or we can bring that back to later day.
Mr. Chairman.
Yes, sir.
I make a motion that we approve the request for ten thousand dollars.
And that, that, that comes out of contingency.
Right.
Yeah, got a motion from Commissioner Peacock, a second from Commissioner McKinney. Any other questions? Comments? Hearing none, all those in favor of the motion as stated, please symbolize by raising the right hand. All opposed. Same sign. Motion carries unanimously. Thank you.
Uh, we also need an approval to, uh, award the actual contract. That was also part of that request.
Yeah, need a motion to approve the contract. So she, we now got a motion to Commissioner Branch. Second from Commissioner Crutchfield. Any other questions? Comments? Hearing none, all those in favor of the motion, please signify by raising the right hand. All opposed, same sign. Motion carries unanimously. Thank you. Item number fourteen is a board discussion of May ninth, regular meeting. The Daniels?
Um, yes, sir. So, uh, our chairman will not be able to be at the May ninth regular meeting and so we're asking for the board to consider moving that meeting to May sixteenth at nine AM.
Got a motion from Commissioner Branch. That means, uh, what that means is we're going to have a meeting two weeks in a row. I will be out of the country soon. Got a motion from Commissioner Branch, second from Commissioner Crutchfield. Any comments, concerns? Hearing none, all those in favor of the motion, please signify by raising the right hand. All opposed, same sign. Motion carries unanimously. Thank you. Um, item number fifteen is here, item number fifteen is the board approval of the change order number three for next step endeavor.
The deducted change further, remove the top circuit breakers and applicable sales tax from M and W's contract to compensate the county for the direct purchase of the same breakers.
So move.
Okay, motion from Commissioner Peacock. Second from Commissioner Branch. Any questions, comments, concerns? Hearing none, all those in favor of the motion as stated, please signify by raising the right hand. All opposed, same sign. Motion carries four to zero with me abstaining due to a conflict of interest. Item number sixteen, uh, board approval to award, uh, twenty-two, twenty-three dash eleven. Uh, this is the, uh, Jackson Blue Springs concessionaire to the highest ranked firm, uh, highest bidder, uh, proposal, um, Ms. Daniels?
So after, uh, gathering all of the rankings and, uh, assessing those, we are recommending to award to Cold Water Excursion.
Thank you. You've heard the, uh, request based on the complicated, uh, uh, grading, you have questions?
I'm likely through.
Got a motion from Commissioner McKinney, second from Commissioner Peacock to approve, uh, Cold Water Excursions as the highest ranked firm. Uh, any other questions? Comments? Hearing none, all those in favor of the motion, please signify by raising the right hand. All opposed, same sign. Motion carries unanimously. Uh, Brett, when do you think that, that, they'll actually begin, uh, according to their proposal? This will actually take place this summer, will it?
Yes, sir. So the, uh, owner of Cold Water Excursions reached out to me yesterday. He's anxious to set up a meeting between myself and him to kind of outline steps needed to get the ball rolling for this season and they're anxiously waiting, getting started.
Okay, very good.
Chairman. Are they going to have all that construction to a point where you'll be ready to open?
Yes, sir. We had a, a, um, progress meeting last week. Talk about the stormwater project that's currently underway and it is moving forward and have full anticipation of it being completed by opening weekend.
And when is opening weekend? Is that?
It'll be made, I believe it's twenty-seventh, which is the Saturday before Memorial Day.
Okay, it'll be interesting to see how this works out.
Yes, it will.
Yeah, okay, very good. Uh, Sheriff is no longer with us, uh. Counsel, anything that we need to? You have nothing? Ms. Daniels, anything else? Okay, Mr. Peacock?
Always.
Always.
Brett, what's going on with cleaning up the mill pond?
So I got word from the research team from Gainesville, a couple of weeks ago, they are anticipating coming back up and doing the treatment or first part of this month, which we're, you know, getting into pretty good now. So I expect to get a confirmed date within the next week or two.
You get that date, would you let me know?
Absolutely. I'll be sharing that with everyone here. If I get with Dylan, we'll put some stuff out on the socials and make sure that's well known.
Thank you. That's all I have.
Jeff? You're precious luck.
I got one thing. Lady called me from they'll maybe eight mill road and that's the road where the chips deal.
Mm-hmm.
She had a problem back earlier. Just complaining about it, where the road was built up, water wouldn't flow out of her yard. She's lived up on a hill out, but down where the road is by a mailbox. It's only water. Well, she kind of added to the problem a little bit, cause went down there and looked and she had paved her driveway, uh, for her drive, which naturally, you know, they built it up a little, which made more.
But her driveway is starting to hold some additional water.
A lot of water, yeah, but, uh, I didn't know, maybe we could ask Jeffrey if he could go down and kind of look at and advise what we need to do. She kind of made a problem. She kind of made a problem and, uh.
Yeah.
Eric Cruz, I mean, yeah, uh, supervised, he went down with that day she called me. I went back next day, which he went down a little bit.
So is, is that her driveway that's farthest down or? That driveway down there?
No, no, that is a driveway. She has a circle drive starts right here at Blacktop and circle around. And actually, this is the deepest part of the water. So it takes something down that way. It's like I told her. And it may be something she needed to do under her driveway since we made it, but if you put pipe on there, it's not going to take all this water across the lowest. It needs to be under this guy or either under the road.
Jeffrey, can you go, go take a look at that with them?
That was one of the, one of the citizens, and they tied in our road that we chipped still, paved their driveway. They built a driveway up and then put range. I just have to look and see if it's more feasible. Because there was a ditch line and a hill, a little water there, but nothing like in the picture like she got now. They got a little deal on the, on the edge of the property, I wouldn't guess, a little grist wheel or something. And, uh, and so that water drains out of the pond and crosses the road right there. I think it would be easier to put a pipe under her driveway and let the water go to there. Or you might as well put one under the road from, from between her driveway. I just have to look at it to see what's what'll, what'll make it look better.
And, and that road has just been recently chip sealed?
It's, it's actually, that road is actually on the list of the roads that they're supposed to be coming up here to do now. They were just red at the time. And it's still got a lot of stuff they got to come back to, too. So I mean, if we need to do a change order or something like that, so it's still, it's still got time. Uh, we know this, it's on the open contract that they're supposed to be.
I think if you put a pipe across the road, I know we don't want to cut the road into brand new road, but I take care of the whole problem. She asked the people to do the work. And she said it wouldn't end their contract to do pipe work. So he was concerned about it at the time it was being done. And so, you know, she never said anymore to this come back and get it down or she that part of her driveway, which raised that, it created a problem.
There's, there's not a, uh, how big of a pipe would it take? You got any idea?
I, I'll have to go look at it. I think just from looking at that picture right there. Um, I it's, I don't think it would take a big time at all, maybe eighteen or smaller. Probably even get that with a twelve inch pipe. But it just, they built the driveways up, as you can see, and then some of the pictures that I looked at. Um, you can see the lime rock where they built it up. So it's just smooth going into a driveway. So it doesn't, it don't, it don't have anywhere to run. And asphalt driving on the bank, so. The old road and her two driveway.
With it being chip sealed, if they cut the road and put a twelve inch pipe in, uh, or something even bigger, uh, will they be able to patch that and we're going to be problematic going forward?
You, you attach.
Yeah.
It just had to be put back, had to be put in the lime rock and, uh, they, they got to come back and, uh, put us up to the existing asphalt on the old road. It looks like they run out of their pile seal and all right there, but a lot is starting to unravel, so they're going to have to patch it.
All right, very good.
Jeffrey, when will they be back? Good question.
If it was, so, uh, it kind of, I think, see, I'm sent at the legal to find out from here to now, starting up, uh, for somebody else, you know, and uh, because Royce would have settled on that job, Royce finished, he finished it back in November. And, um, they, they told us over the year, second date of April, which that is this week. We're not, I heard. So it's, it's over there in here some months ago.
Okay. Anything else, Commissioner?
I got one thing, uh, Mr. I noticed on the phone, I guess, we've got some things. I guess where the legislature or whatever is ruling on making term limits the county commissioners to the board.
Mm-hmm.
Has that gone through?
Good question. The question is, is the term limits, term limits is what you're talking about for county commissioners and school board members? Did it get, uh, approved? I mean, I know that's been an issue that we've been following.
I don't know that they.
I think it got out of the Senate, it's over to the House.
Or it was the opposite.
No, it started in the Senate. I know who introduced it. But, uh, and the way it's written, it would affect you and Edward. It wouldn't affect the others of us.
Why?
Because we were in office before Sunday, twenty-two.
It would have been later on. Yeah, I mean, this would have been him quicker and, and, uh.
Yeah.
As far as I think, I think it wouldn't be left up to the people. Both of person and, you know, in and out, they want to keep that one. I mean, otherwise, these, they say, well, I like this person. You know, and he's doing a good job, then he don't have no choice. They're going to get out. And so it's always been now, it's come the, uh, uh, constitution. Some of those that are set by the constitution, yeah, go by that. This wasn't set by the constitution. So I think it should be left up to the people, even far enough along, when election comes, let them vote on it. Let people vote on it instead of few people saying, uh, type of sound like a good idea, but they might be in favor of it, so they, but it's not affecting them.
It's probably going to pass for the simple reason they'll turn.
Yeah.
And that's what I was told.
I think there were a number of, uh, uh, contacts that could be made to voice your opinion. If you've not done it, had the opportunity to do that one way or the other, it probably would be good. Tony, did you have something you wanted to add?
I think it's bad, second.
Okay.
My life is, it's going.
Yeah. Okay, Mr. McKinney?
Yeah, um, Jeffrey, I, I see they have started to work on two thirty-one, the patch work and one sixty-two. I have come along with that process.
Uh, that.
Yeah. And I want to get with you shortly after this meeting. Thanks, sir.
Okay, well, anything?
Yes.
Tony, Maril, anything? One thing I'd like to say is the, uh, public, uh, press releases that we've been putting out, the, the one recently on Spring Creek, I think those are very, very helpful. Dylan do a good job with writing those, very well written. I think they're beneficial to get those public, uh, notices out. Uh, I think it, uh, helps, uh, educate, uh, the public on any, any current issues. I appreciate that. Uh, anything else from any of the other commissioners? Hearing none, we'll adjourn this meeting of the Jackson County Board of County Commissioners.